The time is now nine oh five. Two, providing limited exemption to small business under the Dave Santos Business Enhancement Act. I'd like to recognize senators that have joined me this morning. I have to my far right Senator Amanda Shelton and Senator Therese Trelawney. To my far left, I have Senator Jim Moylan and Senator Beskou Lee. General rules for public hearing. The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of the sign up on the signing sheet. Written testimony may be read. Lengthy written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with written testimony for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. Persons will be allowed to prevent oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for proceedings. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form, decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted, removed from the room. Please be advised if we do not follow proper form and decorum, you will be asked to leave. You will be escorted. We will not entertain any of those conduct. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name for the record. We will begin testimony, but before we begin that, I want to ask the main sponsor to have her opening remarks. Ma'am?
Soodus Masih, Mr. Chair. Welcome everyone to your Guam Congress building and I also want to begin by thanking you, Mr. Chair, for agreeing to hear this bill again. I'd also like to thank my colleagues who have co-sponsored this piece of legislation to help our island's small and micro businesses. Speaker Barnes, Senator Moylan, and you, Mr. Chair. In addition, I would like to thank the Leon Guero Tenorio administration and our experts at BBMR for their continued cooperation and collaboration. I'd also like to thank our experts at GITA for providing us with the language that could improve this bill. After consultation with GITA, we realized that bond covenants, promises made by a prior administration as a condition of borrowing millions on the bond market prevented us from expanding a program that has worked well for years. Bill number one dash thirty-five LS as amended is the result of the committed work of our experts and partners, people who went back to the drawing board and found a way that works. Under Bill One as amended, the Dave Santos Act would remain the same, but any business making between fifty thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year will pay a business privilege tax or BPT rate of three percent on the first five fifty thousand dollars earned instead of the five percent presently required by law. Mr. Chair, in these austere times, I know some of my colleagues are concerned about the cost of this measure to government. According to the revised fiscal note from BBMR, we know that twenty-two hundred businesses make between fifty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand respectively. If every single one of those businesses qualified for the maximum exemption provided by Bill One, that figure would be the equivalent of approximately one point four two percent of the general fund. If just one-third of those businesses claimed the maximum benefit, that number would be just approximately half of one percent of the general fund, point four seven percent. That's less than one percent. While recognizing the budget impacts of this proposal in context are vital, we have no clear metric to determine the economic benefit of small business owners spending more of their own money in the free market. While the fiscal note may tell us what it will cost, that same note does not tell us what we will gain when hundreds of businesses breathe a little easier or grow in economic confidence. Small businesses are at the core of our island's economy and Bill One provides an effective tax cut of nearly half a business's BPT liability. With this money, small business owners can spend more on investments, create jobs, or provide added benefits to their employees, all in all contributing to the growth of our economy. Small businesses don't hoard their money in the Cayman Islands. They spend it right here on Guam, and that's why investing in these businesses makes sense. And when our experts warn us of possible negative growth, negative economic growth, we have to act. Simple economics tells us that when businesses have more money to spend, they do so in our economy, generating more dollars and contributing to more growth and more jobs. And although data for our small businesses are not readily available, the Small Business Administration tells us that small businesses contribute to sixty-five percent of all new job growth in our country. And yet fifty percent of these businesses fail within the first five years of operation. Bill One aims to get the government off the backs of small businesses, to provide them the means to succeed and in turn help us turn the tide in ensuring positive economic growth. Soodus Masih, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to the feedback from our community and our stakeholders and questions from our colleagues. Again, Soodus Masih.
Thank you, Senator Lee. I'd like to also recognize have joined us Senator Mary Torres. Thank you, ma'am. I ask the following individuals to please join us on the table, and that would be Ricky Hernandez. We have Mr. Sinfree Linsangan. We'd have Bobby from the Guam Association of Realtors. I wasn't too sure how to pronounce your last name, sir, and I didn't want to murder it.
Sash Teesh.
Sash Teesh? Okay. We just work with the Bobby. I think that will work just fine. And we have Ms. Lorraine Okada. Ma'am? We have, is Daphne Shimizu here? Daphne? Director? And we have Mr. Yujoa. We will begin with, let me see. You're all signed up except for one for support, so I'm going to assume, oh no, he's in support. So we'll just start with, I'm going to save GITA for last, okay? So I'll go ahead and begin with Bobby and we'll work our way from my right, your left, and work your way to the right. Thank you.
Buenos dias, senadores, chair. I'm ecstatic by the introduction of Bill One Thirty-five and can attest that the Guam Association of Realtors and its four hundred and fifty-two members are aligned and committed to support this legislation. Bill One Thirty-five LS as amended has been written in the best interest of Guam, our members, and the government. The bill provides tax exemptions for a wider range of companies and professionals that in contrast to the current laws, law raises the maximum gross income standard to two hundred and fifty thousand with the first fifty thousand being exempt from gross receipts tax. Our association recognizes the value of this legislation and will continue to actively support such legislation that demonstrates forward thinking. Furthermore, it creates greater consumer confidence and it boosts and is a boost of creativity by bringing new and tactful regulation into our island's economy. We stand united to capitalize on this opportunity and will embrace the change our economy needs for a prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Ms. Shimizu?
Hafaday, good morning, Senator San Agustin and members of the Thirty-Fifth Guam Legislature. For the record, my name is Daphne Shimizu. I'm the director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Bill number one thirty-five proposes to create a new class of taxpayer to the existing Dave Santos Small Business Enhancement Act by establishing a gross income exemption threshold separate and apart from the businesses that currently qualify under this program. Our records show that approximately twenty-two hundred new taxpayers would be affected by this proposal, with each expected to realize a gross receipts tax savings of a thousand dollars annually. The Department of Revenue and Taxation is concerned there is no effective date proposed within. However, we believe that this can be addressed by adding a sixty-day time period which would allow for our department to make system programming changes and revisions to tax forms as well as time to establish guidelines for its implementation and enforcement. As this legislation makes specific changes to our local tax law, the department actually takes no position on the bill. However, we believe it's important to take note that there is a potential decrease of two point two million in gross receipts tax revenue should this bill become law. Thank you again, Senator.
Ms. Shimizu, when you mentioned sixty days, sixty days from it passing and signing to law, or would you?
Correct. So we actually went back to our systems people to make sure that if this were to become law, that we would be able to, or at what point or how long it would take for our systems people to make sure that we could make the changes to our forms and to our system so that it's able or capable of processing this, and they gave us a timeframe of about sixty days. So that's what we were proposing or recommending.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, Ms. Shimizu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to all of you senators. My name is Sadfree Linsangan. Well, first of all, I would like to thank you for this bill, Senator Lee, and all the co-sponsors. This is a big savings to small businesses, especially to the businesses that are making two hundred and fifty thousand. It means they'll be saving five thousand dollars a year. And just like what Cortech said, the Cortech owner, when he testified here, he did that savings for the rainy day, and that's a big business. In fact, the GITA only recommends seventy-five percent income tax rebate and the same time they're not paying four percent GRT, but this legislature amended it and make it hundred percent. Luckily, Governor Calvo vetoed it. There's only three senators that did not support it. Just one of the frustration. Anyway, yeah, it will help a lot of business, but this one is half-baked. It's raw. It's not fully cooked. How about those making two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred? And besides, Senator, I would like, forgot to thank you because I enjoy coming to your hearing because you got representation and could talk a lot, especially to Senator Torres. For sure I'll be heard even though sometimes I am out of line, you know? Thank you for the extra minutes, Mr. Chairman. Well, yeah, that's my concern, Mr. Chairman, because during the campaign, one candidate said, when he was at the Guam Business, if elected, I will roll back the GRT from five percent to four percent. Now she's elected, she's singing a different tune. She increased the property tax to one million dollars, now she don't want to roll back the five percent to four percent. I think, again, this is unconstitutional, but don't worry, I will not file a lawsuit. If I will, it will be against the US government for the injustices that they made to the island and people of Guam. I got to remind, Mr. Chairman, that once you became a public official or government official, you are bound to adhere to the organic act, to the federal law. You cannot just introduce bill that will violate the federal law or else one million dollar will be charged to you, just like the Davis case, the court ordering the government to pay one million dollar for the lawsuit. And even the Attorney General, his position was created by the federal organic act. His duty first and foremost is to, Mr. Chairman, is to oversee the enforcement of federal law, not fight the federal law or not fight the legality of the federal law. That's why we're having a lot of problem, you know? You should resign and act as an activist lawyer, not to fight the legality of the federal law.
Sir, 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 listen to the bill.
Yes, this bill is raw, half-baked, you know? And I hope the governor will find a way to honor her promise to stabilize the financial condition of the government. But how can she do that if she appointed so many positions that is not needed, create positions that is not important? That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, if you have any question, I can.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good mornings, Sen Hafaday, Torres Hamza. My name is Lorraine Sanchez Okada, a resident of Berghada, Guam. Apologize for my hoarse voice, the absence of any sounds coming out of my lips. I am the president and founder of Okada Managing Consulting Services, and I specialize in human resources and business consulting. My company's mission is to help small businesses start up in a very practical way and in a way that they're not part of the statistics where a lot of businesses fail on the first five years. I represent two hats this morning, my consulting services as well as GUMA, which is an acronym for Guam Unique Merchandise and Arts. GUMA is a program that provides practical business training for all of our startup businesses whose businesses are more locally inspired. These are artists and craftspeople who don't necessarily have the education wherewithal, so we provide that. The GUMA program also provides grant and funding opportunities, seed money, so that these small businesses have a way to start and relieve the burdens off of them so they can be successful in their efforts, not only to promote Guam in terms of their products which are locally inspired, but also to provide some economic relief for themselves as well as for the people here on our island. We fully support Bill One dash thirty-five, an act to amend the David Santos Act and to increase the benefit and gross income threshold of the David Santos Act to two hundred and fifty thousand. The Dave Santos Act was created to provide some enhancement and opportunities to expand and grow for our small businesses. The GUMA program also provides that same mission, and so we have with us several of our GUMA grads. Can you all raise your hand and wave? Who really are in support of this bill and we just ask that you provide them the opportunity. In a study that was made by Wells Fargo and the Gallup Industry Bank in 2013, the top five issues and concerns that small businesses have are, first of all, how to do a business plan, which our GUMA program provides for these folks, a marketing plan, general management, and the two very important things are cash flow analysis and the financial strategy. With this bill, the passing of this bill, it will really help support and help these small businesses increase their cash flow and provide job creations like you had mentioned there, Senator Regine, that providing those additional cash flows will just help with the job creation and further investments into their business so that they can, again, not be part of the statistics of businesses that fail for the first five years. Our history, GUMA has existed for the last five years. We're going on our sixth year, and I am very proud to say that none of them have failed just yet. And so I think with this bill, we can provide further support for these individuals and entrepreneurs, help them grow, help them expand, and be able to compete in the market that we have here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine. Mr. Yujoa.
Good morning and thank you, senators, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Therese Trelawney, Senator San Agustin, and Senator Regine Lee, and Senator Jim Moylan. Thank you for hearing our testimony. I also want to just say that my testimony is not just in support of the bill, but in support of the other points that were made earlier from the Guam Association of Realtors and from Daphne Shimizu from Rev and Tax, and of course, Ms. Okada. So my name is John Yujoa. I'm the president of National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors, Marianas. We are an industry association of insurance professionals and insurance agents as well as financial advisors and broker-dealer firms and registered investment advisors and their firms. So what we aim to do is not just speak to the macro-micro economy and the benefits of this, but also we're representing thousands of clients and in many cases, we represent thousands of participants of retirement plans that stand to benefit from this. So I'll read my testimony. Dear senators, we commend your efforts to reduce the tax burden of micro and small businesses. In reality, these businesses end up paying a higher proportion of their incomes to taxes by creating a favorable environment for their tax obligations. It incentivizes these businesses to grow and prosper, and that boosts Guam's economy. That boosts the GDP and our overall revenue. Please accept our testimony in support of the bill. Here's just some of the benefits. So this could be a micro and small business incubator, and of course, I want to defer to GITA as well as the industry associations that were like GUMA and GAR and as well as the Small Business Development Center over at EOG for the nitty-gritty details of that. But lower tax costs for the micro-small business segment is the first step in creating an incubator program, is the first step to lowering the barriers to entry, and that spurs growth, that spurs higher employment and healthy wages. Lower cost to entry can lead to more businesses opening, and as mentioned in the bill, there are countless industries, including professionals, white-collar, blue-collar businesses, retail products, services, farming, fishing, et cetera. So all of these industry segments will benefit. That is a wide spectrum of our people of Guam and the businesses that make up our economy, and this can attract businesses and workers who have left the job market as well, and these are individuals who can work but choose not to. So these folks can return and contribute to the economy, and this leads to an increase in business licensing fees collected. I am sure Rev and Tax would like that. When you have lower cost to entry, hey, I'm going to start my own business, and I'm going to have to do that by getting a business license, and that's Gov Guam, that's revenue for Gov Guam. In addition, anybody I hire, even if it's just my family members and, you know, one or two folks, those folks will also be paying taxes to Gov Guam, and those folks will also be spending their paychecks within the economy. So this is also an opportunity for Gov Guam to buy local. Gov Guam itself is a large entity, and Gov Guam procures many products and services, and Gov Guam can be a driver and Gov Guam can inject this stimulus into the economy by purchasing from micro and small businesses. Now, this is not going to be the case for every contract and every need, but like any anything that needs to be procured, there's going to be the smaller orders all the way up to the larger orders. So this will help for Gov Guam to be a driver in the economy and, of course, as long as it's fiscally responsible and within Gov Guam's budget. So business incubators are direct pathways for economic growth. We know that, and when Gov Guam makes a consistent effort to purchase from micro and small businesses, they can become a key driver for the incubator system. And as this develops over time, this leads to greater tax collections and GDP growth in the economy. So this is a very concrete way for Gov Guam to make an impact into the economy. Okay? So here's a basic economic principle. So Gov Guam can use tax revenues to buy goods and services from micro and small businesses who they in turn, these businesses, earn profits, they hire employees, they pay taxes, and then that goes right back around to Gov Guam will collect greater and greater tax revenues and business license fees. And over time, as the cycle repeats and money constantly circulates within the economy, you'll have a greater velocity of that circulation. Okay? Now, this is going to help have a balanced economy, so one way to strengthen Guam's economy is to have favorable tax policies that incentivize entrepreneurship and capital investment. A healthy economy must be balanced from the giant and the large corporations to the midsize all the way down to the micro and small businesses. That's the key to having a healthy economy, is that ecosystem has to be well represented. And so by maintaining that synergy within the economic ecosystem where businesses feed off of each other both vertically as well as horizontally, that also leads to healthy competition, that also leads to fair prices. Who benefits? The end consumer. Who also is an end consumer? Gov Guam, who's also an end consumer as well, some of these other corporations. So the entire economy can benefit, not just the micro and small businesses. In addition, that leads to, it serves the job market by providing workers for that fair compensation, and they have more options for job mobility, and when you have a broader spectrum of industry skills and ages of employees that are created from this. So having the diversified labor pool as well is another benefit. This can possibly lead to more family-owned businesses and youth, young adult businesses, so that I've defined that as businesses opened by individuals that are under age eighteen, so, you know, somebody getting their very first taste of entrepreneurship and wanting to make some income. This can lead to greater youth and young adult hiring, and the economy's evolved in the last couple of years. Often people need multiple streams of income to make ends meet. Often people want a side hustle or they might already have a full-time job and that side hustle helps with their needs as a second income stream. So this can help online technology businesses and businesses in multiple industries that are either underserved or introduced to Guam for the first time. So in addition to adding more industries to our economy, this attracts more workers who are then gaining skills and experience, and that can be transferred across the entire job market over time. So in conclusion, NAFA Marianas, we support the bill. We think it's a very good incentive to the economy, and we believe Gov Guam will benefit by collecting more business license revenue as well as tax revenue. We believe the job market will benefit because this will lead to more jobs, and we also believe that the consumers will benefit because this will lead to better pricing for products and services. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hernandez. Ricky, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ricky Hernandez, for the record. I'm the deputy administrator at the Guam Economic Development Authority. I send a male sense of regards, she's not able to be here, but I'm reading her testimony on behalf of GITA and herself. Dear Chairman San Agustin, Hafaday, Chairman San Agustin and distinguished members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill One dash thirty-five LS as amended relative to providing limited exemptions to small businesses under the Dave Santos Small Business Enhancement Act. In GITA's previous testimony to the committee, it cautioned that the original language of Bill Thirty-five LS would expressly violate the business privilege tax or BPT bond indenture and committed to working with the committee to ensure that the intent of the policy, which was to provide tax incentives to our small business owners, could be achieved. In working with our bond council, GITA transmitted what is now Bill One dash thirty-five as amended to the committee on March eleventh. as amended, to the committee on March 11, 2019. Bill 1-35, as amended, aims to create a tax incentive program for Guam's small businesses, separate and apart from the existing Dave Santos Act provisions. The Dave Santos Act provisions allows for businesses with annual gross income at or below $50,000 to be eligible for a complete exemption from the BPT on up to $40,000 of their annual gross income. The newly coined Dave Santos Small Business Enhancement Act allows for the businesses with annual gross income in excess of $50,000, but not more than $250,000, to be eligible for an exemption of 2% of the 5% BPT on up to $50,000 of their annual gross income. GITA supports Bill 1-35 as amended, as it will provide incentives for our small business owners to continue to grow and contribute positively to our economy. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 1-35 as amended. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have Mr. Sanjay from Portimoca. Sir, would you want to testify? If you can please come forward before I ask my colleagues to ask questions.
Good morning, Senators. I do support this bill. In fact, I was talking to Senator Biskoly that, earlier yesterday, that we should expand this bill to cover the definition of small business. If you look at the Small Business Administration's definition, it's much wider than what we're defining it as, capping it at 250,000. It goes anywhere from $35 million to $500 million in annual sales with employees at 1,500 employees in a given business. That's the definition from the U.S. Small Business Administration. Now, we discussed that Guam is at a smaller scale, which I understand. But, we were, I was proposing that we define it or cover businesses with 50 employees or less. Consider small business and exempt from the 2%, and still be covered with the 3% GRT. Because businesses with 50 employees or less are still considered small business, contrary to what maybe it seems from the outside. The businesses that, at the moment, that are proposed at 250,000 a year, that's, that's a business making about 20,000 a month. Those only cover really stalls, mom-and-pop shops, food court stalls, trucks, the food trucks. They make about that much, and you have the owner or the relatives that work in that truck, or that stall, or that small store, business, whatever it may be. They don't employ as many people as you might think, because the owner covers one or two, three individuals. They're growing business. They're not driving it the way you might think it is. Now, I'm from the small business community as well here, as you know. We employ people. We don't have a chance, as a business owner, to stand behind the counter and work it, because we're at a different level where we need to employ people. We can't stand there and take, cover those two, three jobs that an owner might do, you know? So, I'm proposing to expand it to companies that are 50 employees or less to cover under this bill. Now, if you do that, you reduce the tax rate on these companies. You're going to actually drive more business. Business will be more attracted to come to Guam, or even have the motivation, current businesses, to expand in Guam, as myself and others, because it gives us incentive to grow more with less taxes. Honestly, even the 5%, it's really gouging at the bottom line. I'm not sure if you, you know how it is, you know, out there in the real world, because that 5% that's been increased to right now, businesses are hit from all other angles as well, from landlords. Landlords have raised the rent to cover the additional in 1%. Vendors, service agencies, everything has increased, not just our GRT from our sales, but other vendors and businesses who we do business with, and I'm sure other businesses do as well, have paid the increase in price for services and products where they purchased from. So, I don't see how this benefits, the 5% benefits businesses. It just increases the bottom line, the product cost. Our people end up paying more for what they should. Things get expensive here. Now, if we can reduce to 3% and cover more businesses, I know it's all about revenue, revenue collection and all that, and the revenue shortfall will happen because we're reducing it. But, in the end, honestly, you're, it's either that saying, you want to make a quick dime or a slow quarter. You're going to turn the wheels out there in the economy. More businesses will open. Guam will be a more tax-friendly place, like, places like, I was mentioning Hong Kong to Senator Dubai, where companies only pay an annual corporate tax. You don't pay a monthly GRT or a sales tax constantly. It's an annual tax. There's no tax monthly. Look at those economies. Look at Hong Kong. It's the size of Guam. Look what they're doing differently, and they're only four hours away. So, I'm asking that we expand the umbrella of this 3% reduction, to reduce it, the reduction of 3% to cover businesses with 50 employees or less, because they're still small business, and we need to take care of them as well, because they're the ones in a growth phase who are already growing and can contribute more to the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I would ask my colleagues. I'll start with Senator Torres. Do you have any questions, ma'am?
Thank you for your testimony. GITA, in looking at the, the range of businesses defined here, this is broad enough to encompass anyone that would fall into this category of between 50 to 250,000 annual income, right? Or is there, is there something else that perhaps we're missing?
I think based on Rev tax testimony, there's between, I think there's 2,200 businesses currently that fall within that range.
So, the, so the people that are described on lines eight to 10 of page one would, would be broad enough to encompass all the businesses that we need to capture, right? I just want to make sure there isn't something else that we are overlooking.
I think, I think based on the, based on the population of businesses, based on the, that's written in the policy, that's, it's 2,200. If the intent of the policy was to expand it, then that would, that would obviously change. But, that's, that's what Rev tax has based on their data.
Okay. I'm, I was glad to see the impact from Rev and Tax's assessment of what this would mean to the general fund income. And, but I wanted to ask you, though, there's been a lot of discussion about the applicability of the exemption to the first 50,000, and, and how some people are, are applying that almost in their monthly filings to where they pay no taxes. So, in other words, rather than exempting only the first 50,000, if they fall, if their, if their income for the month, if their GRT filings, BPT filings are below 50,000, they generally don't pay. So, in other words, they, they ended up, they end up taking advantage of much more than the threshold of just the 50,000 initial exemption. Is there, does Rev and Tax have a system of, of tracking the exemptions taken by small businesses so that they aren't in fact exempting beyond the 50,000 limit?
Thank you, Senator Torres. As I understand, well, so the, the current Dave Santos Act exempts the first $40,000 for a company, or for a business, or a GRT account that doesn't exceed $50,000 in total gross receipts tax. And as I understand it, our system does actually capture if people try to take more than the 40,000, the current system. Does that, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so it must just be, yeah, I think, I think the people that brought that to my attention perhaps weren't understanding the, the way the exemptions are. You're correct. It is 40,000. It's on the first 50,000. So, it might have just been a misunderstanding. But, but the, the tracking, though, is what I was concerned about, is if we were to even go on to this, would we in fact know when they've reached their exemption, their cap?
Right. Our, the way our, our system is currently set up, we don't have something in place to capture this. We would actually have to work with our systems people to make sure that the system is programmed to capture those between the, well, between the 50 and the 250. So, we, as I mentioned in our testimony, or I mentioned earlier, we actually already have reached out to our systems people to make sure that this can happen, and, and how much time it would take to implement such change in our system. Thank you. You're welcome.
Senator Chalai, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for your testimony today. I just wanted to point out, though, for, for Mr. Yujoa, your testimony is on the original bill. Is that correct? Have you seen the amended version?
Yeah, I'm still doing my homework on the amended version. I was just made aware of it recently, so.
I just want to clarify. So, this bill is significantly different than the original bill, so I thank you for your work on that, GITA, and Revenue and Taxation. I just want to clarify, Ms. Shimizu, if you could make it very clear, because we are getting different estimates on this new bill, whether it, it is going to save a company that makes, for example, $250,000 a year, or who is making that much, 5,000 or 1,000. So, your estimates and the BBMR statement says it's going to save them $1,000 per year, per company?
Yes, correct.
That's the maximum?
Right.
So, these, the other talk about 5,000, that's not going to happen?
So, the way that we have, we understand the bill, and we, what we did was we went and we calculated, is that for those companies that have, okay, so this actually, the original bill, I believe, was an amendment to the current Dave Santos Act. This bill actually is going to add a section to Chapter 26 of Title 11. So, this is, the Dave Santos Act, as it currently exists, will not be, as we read it, will not be impacted. This is an expansion or a new section, and like we mentioned in our testimony earlier, it's going to add a new class of taxpayer, a new class of exemption. And how we calculate, or how the 50,000 is, I'm sorry, excuse me, how the $1,000 is calculated is that it's because the 2% of the 50,000 exemption for those companies or for those businesses that make 50,000 to 250,000 is going to be exempted, you would take the 50,000 times 2%. And so, because all of those companies are above 50,000, right? All of those companies would actually have that 2% of the 50,000 as a benefit, if this were to pass.
Okay. And, the census that I was looking at divided up business categories based on income, and so, yeah. But I wasn't sure where the $250,000, if that represents a certain class in, besides just income. I mean, yeah, how did we get 250, I guess, and maybe, maybe the sponsor can clarify, versus any other amount for small business? But, I understand it's, that you were able to calculate the impacts of 200, for the $250,000 class of people. All right. What about, are you able to confirm? I know that one of the theories of the Trump tax cuts was they were going to cut corporate taxes. So, we're seeing in the CRR that it cut $20 million in Guam's corporate taxes, or that's the estimate. And, but has that resulted, have you seen, whether that, or are you able to tell us whether that resulted in increased expenditure or investment on Guam?
With regards to TCJA, we're actually, so TCJA basically went into effect, most of the provisions went into effect January 1, 2018. And because of that, and people are just now filing for 2018, now in 2019, it's difficult to say really what the, the total impact is until we're done processing all of the returns, basically, because the data that we have is, we really don't have a lot of data for 2018. So, as I mentioned before, it's difficult to say, but we're really looking at that. Of course, we know, though, that the impact of tax cuts and jobs was to reduce corporate tax rates and income tax rates, right? So, there are different brackets now. But, again, I can't share with you at this point what the actual impact is.
All right. Well, hopefully, we can see something like that later on. But, and I appreciate this, this bill and the intent to save small businesses, even $1,000 a year is significant. I, I was a small business owner for 25-plus years, and we also, you know, in the early years benefited from the Dave Santos exemption, and so that was helpful for us when we first started out. I wanted, my only concern, I guess, with the bill is that in the face of, you know, we had raised the GRT from 4% to 5% for everyone, and we had raised real property taxes for those over, you know, real property values over $1 million. The government of Guam also, in the last budget, because it said it needed every penny, cut, you know, froze hiring, froze increments. We tried to defund deputy director positions. We froze wireless communications, travel. There's a whole list of things, right? Certified pay for auditors. I just, I just want to make sure that this makes sense, that in, you know, on one hand, we do one thing, and then, on the other hand, we do another. I'm with you. I would rather see if we can find a way to, to do what was talked about, if it's possible, if GITA can help us, and Revenue and Taxation help us to, to reduce that GRT overall. But, otherwise, thank you for all your testimony. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimonies. I appreciate that. I'm glad to see we're moving forward with this. It will help our small businesses. And it should eventually increase, as Jay was saying there. Hopefully, we can look at that in the future. But, you're right. It's the, it's the business folks that, that really fund the economy of our island. You are the folks that, that pay the taxes. You are the ones that need to generate the income to pay for the taxes, for the basic services of education, public safety, and health. So, I'm glad you're really out here and you're explaining a lot, but, but I also ask that you always come back. When you see this body, body before you do different things to increase taxes for what we may feel is necessary. But, your input is so important that you continue to bring us back and highlight us with the importance of businesses succeeding. Capitalism is, is our economy. And of course, we all want to help everybody with better education and funding that, and hospitals, and public safety, but we must make the businesses strive and compete. So, when, when you see different legislations, I do hope, and I ask that you come back. If, if there's any increases, we were talking about BBT, please come forward and give your heart's testimonies, and really tell us how that's going to affect you. If you see any increases in business property tax, some of you may have seen that as well, please, please do come forward and really tell us. Because if we're able to save some here for the businesses starting up, or for those existing ones under that threshold now, with the Dave Santos amendment here that we're trying to increase. But if we increase taxes someplace else, where's that balance? It, does it really exist? But, but we want to make the businesses strive. We want to make you folks go forward. We need the companies to grow and expand, to pay their taxes, and to employ people. So, I thank you, and I look forward to seeing you here in future testimonies for different bills we have upcoming. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator. You know, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming today. Mr. Sanjay, I kind of like the idea that you brought up. Maybe that's something we can ask DRT and Gita to figure out and maybe we can make the impact of the filing of the folks that are under the 50, under the Dave Santos, file it at the end of the year. And then, then we don't have to worry about what Senator Torres brought up is, can we catch the folks that are trying to work the system where they only file, I know that's not what she said, but, but I, as a former tax investigator, that's what I see. Where they have folks where they just file so much every month so they don't have to pay, but if they file annually like Mr. Sanjay brought up, then revenue and tax could catch it, we would know. I mean, I don't know how that would work and I don't know how that would impact on the bond and stuff like that, but something to consider. And I actually look forward to more changes in our taxes, whatever we need to do, but we got to make sure too, we got to keep the government running and you all understand that. We can't just reduce taxes because we believe we need to reduce it, but we need to find ways to help the industry grow. I believe in keeping business in business because it's about the economy. Okay? I know where you're coming from where, when the businesses go out there and they buy goods, they're getting hit with the GRT, yeah, they pay the GRT, but I also am aware that a lot of the businesses, when they go and they buy at the wholesalers, they're not paying the GRT, there's no payment there. They buy it at wholesale, then they sell it and they hit the GRT. I've seen some of them do that. Maybe that doesn't apply to all, but I've seen it done and I actually was just, would be hoping that DRT would be looking at all those parts that are happening out there to find out what's going on because today wholesalers don't pay no taxes. And I just don't understand, because the GRT went up, why does everything go up so fast, but the wholesalers still don't pay no taxes? So that's something that I'd be asking in the very near future is that, what do we need to do to get them involved and not just sit back and say that it's costing more to bring it in? Really? A lot of people are going through online, they're bringing it in, coming from the same shipper that they bring their goods in and it's a lot cheaper. And that's something that DRT needs to look at. The other port of entry, the postal is another port of entry. And that I'm looking at on amending that law, that the postal be considered a port of entry, not just airport and commercial port because there are goods coming in and there's no taxes. But also, we need to remind ourselves that when anybody pays taxes in the mainland for goods that you acquire in the states, you can't be taxed on Guam for the same goods. There's only one shot at being taxed. So people in, for any of our online shoppers, if you're paying taxes in, from the states when you order something, make sure your receipt is available because I'm going to tell you, if DRT ever comes up to you and says, "Well, you owe for use tax," until you show receipt, the bill of lading will state how much you need to pay. And if you have a receipt that says you pay taxes, you're free from taxes on Guam. And the taxes in the mainland is a lot more than what Guam collects. A lot of people don't understand that. I'd ask now the author of the bill to ask any questions and basically close up the bill.
Sutusmasi, Mr. Chair, I have a question for Mr. Hernandez from Gita. So Mr. Hernandez, based on the amended measure as drafted, does anything in our current bond covenants prevent us from applying a reduced BPT rate of 3% to a business's first $100,000 instead of the $50,000 that's presented in the bill?
Just so I can understand the question, so the concept is to raise it from the first 50 to first 100, the exemption of 2%?
Yes.
Okay. Without speaking to bond counsel, I would say that if the 3% is, remains, then up to 2% can be exempted up to as, however much gross income the policy would suggest, so. But then that would obviously have an additional impact on the revenues.
Sutusmasi, and well, we know that the fiscal note from BBMR had kind of cited all of those that are eligible for this benefit and so that's 2,200 potential businesses, correct? Ms. Shimizu?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. I guess I just want to close by really thanking my co-sponsors. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senator Moylan and our speaker for your support of this measure. Also want to thank the Leon Guerrero Tenorio Administration, Gita, Revenue and Tax. Thank you very much, Daphne, for your feedback. We will work to include some of the things that you mentioned in terms of the 60-day window to make sure that you guys are up and running. We want to make sure that that happens should the bill pass and then also the feedback from BBMR, but especially the feedback from our stakeholders. We really want to thank Maria and Bobby from the Realtors, want to thank John with NIFA, Mr. Dewan, we heard from Mr. Linsongen earlier, as well as Lorena Okada and our folks from Guma who are here, our stakeholders in the room. We really want to thank you for your feedback. It's so important for, not just me as a sponsor of the bill, but for my colleagues to really hear from the community about the impact that a bill like this would have. I think it's really also important to note that some of our experts in the field have discussed a multiplier effect for Guam. So every dollar that circulated in our economy has a multiplier effect of, you know, an estimated And so, or it multiplies 3.45 times and that's something really impressive to think about and look at. And also just thinking about why it matters, why this matters to me and we know from hearing from many of you folks and the people that we meet in our community that business is really hard. It's hard to be a micro and small business here on Guam. I think that's even harder sometimes to get started and to make sure that your business is sound and is sustainable and continues to grow and thrive. And I think Bill 1 will allow us all to keep more of the dollars and cents that we earn and that's really the goal of this legislation. So as amended, we have over, you know, potentially 2,200 businesses that would keep more of what they earn. So the question for all of us is, who is better to put that money to work? Bill 1 says that a small business owner should be able to decide for themselves. A new piece of equipment, a salary increase potentially to a valued employee or the completion of improvement projects in their business, it's your money and it'll be spent in our economy. And so we really want the small businesses to be in charge of that. Sutusmasi and thanks again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lee. It appears that there's no one else that would like to testify on Bill Number 1-35. There being none, the committee will conclude the public hearing for Bill 1-35. The committee will continue to receive testimonies up till Friday. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, Housing and submit it via Senator Joe S. Sinagastin at gmail dot com. In reference to Guma, if you do have a listing, ask Ms. Okada or Sarah to provide, if you can provide me a listing, because I know a lot of, there's a lot of people in the public that don't know what you guys are selling, all your products and it's something that I think everybody would love to know. And Sutusmasi, all, you all for attending and for attendance and participating in today's hearing and for those at home, thank you for watching. It is now 10:05. Thank you.